President, who's just now entering the room?
Got to keep you on your toes. All right, do we have a motion to accept the agenda? Motion by Mr. Lawrence.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Guines, all in favor. Unanimous votes, Ms. Carey, will you read what's on the agenda?
Subject matter is to discuss the 2024-2025 budget.
Oh, poor baby, sound awful. Okay, all in favor? Unanimous votes. Moving on to the presentation agenda, mayor's report.
No report.
No report, okay, no departmental reports, we move on to council reports, Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Guines, Mr., oh my gosh, Good MacGyver, I'm sorry. Mr. Tizville?
Yeah, just a brief announcement, I received a notice from the Harrison County Mosquito Board saying that there was a case of West Nile, whatever it is, West Nile disease or whatever, and that they were going door to door in Ward Five, really putting informational flyers, also I have that information on my website and I shared that with the public affairs folks here in the city, so for folks just to be aware of that, thank you.
Mr. Glabbin?
Yeah, briefly, just want to point out that Councilman Guines, he has a ward meeting tonight.
Oh, yeah, yeah, ward meeting tonight, thank you, thank you, Councilman Glabbin.
For those listening out there, come out and attend that informative meeting. The other thing is Pops Ferry Road, the sidewalks, a lot of the grass is growing on the sidewalks, is a popular area for a lot of joggers, people walking, and a lot of the fitness gyms use it to kind of do a route, whether it's their 5K, 3K, or whatever, and it's grown up quite a bit, it's not just a little bit, there's a lot of areas where it's, I mean, it's real bushy, so I would just ask if we can give some emergency attention to some of those sidewalks where that grass is just growing more than usual, and that's it.
Okay, Mr. Schumaker?
No ma'am, I don't have anything.
All right, moving on to public agenda, citizen comments, we have a total time allotted of 45 minutes, each person gets three minutes each to speak, anyone on my left, your right that'd like to speak, anyone? Anyone on my right? Yes ma'am. Oh, okay, I thought you were getting up. No one in the room, okay, citizen comments are now closed. Moving on to the agenda. Go ahead, Mayor, take it away.
Thank you, ma'am, President. We gave you two handouts, and this has changed by the minute, and it's still subject to change, but I think we emailed something Monday, and like I said, that's changed, we've been working continuously with PD and the Fire Department and some of the capital outlay, so you should have the latest and greatest in these two handouts. You can note a little bit where most of our work is done, Diana jumped in if I say something wrong, this does not reflect any kind of percentage, other than the hundred or so we applied and revised from 1365 to $15, and some ones that were in the $14 range, up to 15. That represents about 103 that were in the $13 range, and that jump, when you do the arithmetic, as I said, the 1365 adds, from an annual standpoint, $3,600 to our burden rate, okay, that's the new peers, as well as the matching stuff, so about 103 there, and then we talked a little bit, and we've got both the Police Department and the Fire Department here too, as we rock and roll, because there's some significant things that were done, there is still some revision to be in the capital equipment expenditures, you can look at the column in the sheet that talks about the original schedule, we reduced that from last week to about 1.269 million, so that there's some work, and there's probably $300,000 more work to do, and not buying trucks and things that, you know, we need to do to take care of the employee bumps that we're talking about. Again, I think there's probably 200,000 or 300,000 more that we can do, but I can't do it, you know, until this afternoon, but, you know, we talked a whole lot about what we can do in order to make this a people's budget, you know, an employee budget this year, more so than a lot of other things that we talked about last year. Again, sworn officers in the Police Department made some competitive changes, and that, you know, is about a $400,000 increase, 386,000 is what's reflected in here, that's not any 3% money, but that's just the sworn officers that we kicked up to be competitive that we talked about last time. And when it comes to the Fire Department, they, we looked at what we could do with regard to the six new positions, for budget purposes, we reduced that, and that's about 70,000 a person down out of the budget, but we did add back 12 positions, what's called lieutenant, I think, and of course, we hit them with some capital items, so it's, you know, maybe this way or that way, but bottom line, if you look in the personnel column of this major sheet, you look at what we were and what we're going to, so, you know, we're trying to save some money in capital and put some money in employees, so the combined statement will kind of give you the recap on where we were at the beginning, general fund, 8.5 million, and the departmental expenses were 82055. I've jumped pages now, this is, okay, we're on this page, and coincidentally, this is what was passed last year, at this time last year, the 24 budget, you know, at the June-July timeframe that we were, or July-September timeframe, we were anticipating a 96, $9.6 million general fund beginning, and all departmental expenses added up to be 80,000, 80,562,000, and as compared to 82055682 with this proposed budget here, okay? We still had, in '24, we had a difference when you took all departmental and down departmental together, projected excess over/under, we were over 8.372 million, $430,000, right now, we're looking at 8.325388, so when you just look at the numbers, but still, there's a few million dollars difference, and not only, again, what we're doing for employees, but also, I guess, the beginning balance was a million or so different, and then some of the transfers twos and ends were different, so this budget, if we do what we just passed, we're looking at a negative balance of 975,388 at the very back, the last column, the last row. Okay, let me take a breath, ask Diana something, or whatever we need, so the $2 million is pretty much the raises that we're trying to do, and, you know, I guess, Diana has yelled at me all the time when I say do this and try this, but, you know, each one of those hits 3%, 5%, it's about $500,000, $600,000 to do the things that we have not already touched, is that fair to say? So that would add, you know, to do a 5% for those who are not already touched, would add another million dollars to that point in the ballgame. Again, we're massage in this data, every opportunity we get, you know, again, I'd rather have people than their equipment, and some of the things, the trucks and the beds and stuff like that, that's where we are.
Any questions?
Yeah. Let everybody answer their questions, I'll go last.
Okay, let me ask you, would you like the chief, Nick, say something, or chief?
Well, I was going to ask you, Fofo, you're talking about the 3% for everybody else, and actually with 5% with costs, and if we went to $16 instead of $15, that'd be, so the minimum would be $16 to get a job in City Bucks, how much would that be, $200,000?
No. Well, a dollar, let me ask you, every dollar, a dollar 35 is worth 3,600 a year, annual, to the budget, so I would be adding another 3,000 times 300, so it's another million to do that, to go from 16, plus you'd have to uplift some of the other things at 6 million, yeah. Let me ask you, let me tell you.
We have $16, shouldn't have been a million dollars.
Let me say this, the 1365 to 15 dollars represents a 9.8% raise for 103 people.
Yeah, we've all said this before, it seems to be people who live the quickest, you know, coming in 13, $14, I mean, when you got there cutting grass and heating, digging ditches, I just think, you know, we're going to step up, son, you want to keep the people that stay working here, for $16 an hour, I mean, it's not a lot of money nowadays, I mean, but I was just wondering, you got to give me, if we're $200,000, $250,000, that's what I need to find out, with a dollar, because I know it affects everybody, it bumps up everybody, you know, and that's right.
Push them that much more, you'd probably move on probably 150 people, don't you think? Do you have to revise that? Yeah, so, I mean, again, this is the baseline, and, you know, if we can figure out what we can live with, to me, like I said, the difference last year to this year is about $2 million, roughly, and it's pretty much in salaries and wages that we, that actually we had to take.
But I know you said last week, you had 130 people in that $15, $16 range, that's where I got the 200-something thousand from.
103, that went from 65.
Yeah, whatever it was.
And then we pushed about another 20 or 30 that were, you know, had to, you know, maintain the difference, they were making $14.25 an hour, that was bumped accordingly too.
Yeah, I mean, 3% is other than 1,800, so a percent must be 600,000, so roughly 5% would be 3 million, instead of 1,800, if you had, if you went to 5% increase for everybody, that's not affected with the dollar, the rest of it is left. Because you said roughly last week, 1% was 600,000, that's what y'all said.
1,785, 1,785.
Yeah, that's roughly about 600,000 percent, right?
With, as it is, you know, 2 million, you know, more this year than last year, and then you would be 3.7 million dollars more. Yeah, we already had two, we added another two. Or you're just using the wrong numbers, yeah.
So I was just trying to figure out, we bring in numbers, see what that would look like, I just, we're interested in doing the best we can for the employees, now we got too many employees, and that's, you know, that's our problem, they don't work, like you said, that's our problem too, so they have to work, that's for sure, you know.
Again, not like the Apostle Paul, there's not a lot of good news in this deal, but, you know, what I am confident in, that we, those folks, the entry level folks, we took care of in the budget as we put it in front of you, and we did, I think, the right thing for PD and the Fire Department, and what we got to do now to retain and keep and put those things together. Y'all chip in if you want, I mean, we're comfortable with.
Councilman, we can't afford more than 15 right now, unless you want to give on something else.
You can afford it, and then you want to afford it, all you do is just what you're doing, you take the money in, you can afford it, yes you can, just some of the stuff we spending money on, we're not spending money on, and we bought everything we're supposed to have been this year, and we bought all the equipment we were supposed to buy, and we fixed all the parks up, and we spent everything that we budgeted last year. I don't know that, did we buy all the cars we were supposed to buy for the Police Department? Don't know that, so I don't know if you spent all the money we budgeted or not, because I don't know how to find it out, I never get that information.
You don't get that information? I'm sorry, I think you do.
I can't hear you.
Financials go out every month, as far as where we are year to date, where we are going to, the total budget, now, there may be some special, but the budget, as revised, is 81.583, and we spent 62.129 million, and we got about 1,800 encumbered on requisitions all in, we should be about, if through period 10, 83.3% of the budget, and right now, we're at 78.39% of the budget, but, again, there's some things that we think we can do, but it's, right now, you know, I think the best case scenario, we will down capital by another half a million, and that puts us in a little bit better position, Diana's researching some things with regard to some monies, I guess, due to the declines that may hit the revenue or the offset to get us out of a, you know, if we spend everything we said we're going to spend, which we never do, we would be, we would be losing 900, almost a million dollars, 976,000, that's that last one. Again, last year, that number was, you know, a positive 1.789 million when we began FY24.
Another question, y'all give me this sheet, again, not me, give everybody this sheet, on the bottom here, they said we transferred out 11 million dollars, but yet I can't find where that 11 million dollars went to, you got 2 million here, you got, but I never see where 11, 719 went to, they said they transferred it, where'd it come from?
What does that say? Is that, that's a 25?
This is, this is this sheet from last week, right, on the bottom, you got 11 million transferred out.
I was just looking at the general fund, what column are you looking at?
I got it. That 11 million is from the ARPA money.
They're from what?
From the ARPA money.
So it came from where?
From the United States Treasury for COVID.
Okay, so would you put that into the budget, or would you do with it, 11 million?
That was last year.
Say again?
That was last year's budget, and not all of it has transferred out because the projects are not complete, it's in the revenue page, you're not going to find it.
Right?
The mayor's objective in putting this part of the budget together for personnel, what he wanted to do was increase the PD wages to get them where we, our police officers are making as much or more than anybody else on the coast, number one, number two, he wanted to get everybody to a minimum wage of all of $15, which is the third time in a row we've raised that, and I think $15 is where we need to be now, and the third thing was a 3% raise for everybody else, that's essentially what you're seeing.
We're trying, but that's not what you're seeing, 3% is not there to about 100 so employees, or you think of it.
That's why I used 600,000 from, the percent, I said 5% would be 3 million, but increasing salaries, and I think it's 200-something thousand if you had a dollar above the 15, I was just looking at other ways to think that we could do, and what were the causes to do it, I mean, that's why we're having this budget, that's what we're looking for.
When we're talking about hits to everyone, in January of 2023, everybody was touched for 5%, two years before that, there was a rain, wasn't it, Diana, if you were between, and it was about 3% total, effectively 3%, so since 2123, that we've increased it about 8% most ever, so now this year, we're trying to do what we can do, you know, to be where we need to be with keeping people and attracting people.
And balance the budget.
Any other questions?
Yeah, another question, back to last week, this is what y'all, you got this 4 million transferred, what is that 4 million? If this is all 11, 11.7 is one thing, that's money we just accepted that we could spend, so that's 11 million, we should have added money, or you spent it already?
The money is set aside for capital projects, the majority of the ARPA money was used for water and sewer infrastructure projects, that 4 million is what we expect to pay by the end of September.
Okay, so is this money reimbursed by FEMA?
It's money we already received, it's not reimbursed.
Okay, this is different than part of the FEMA project, so what are you doing, what are you billing for 4 million?
That's the amount we plan to spend by the end of the fiscal year.
And we have it in what projects, Fofo?
What did he say?
The 4 million, you have, you dedicated this money to a certain thing?
Yes, it's to the Bay Vista, Tanglewood, Mike chime in on the rest of them.
Where we spent it?
Yeah.
We spent it on the Shriners Extension, on the Lorraine Road Extension, on Tanglewood Water, and we're about to spend some on the, well, those four projects.
Bay Vista well.
Bay Vista well.
Did it come in 1.6?
All of those projects were 50/50, 50/50, 50% state money and 50% city ARPA money, so we got a lot of bang for our buck there on those four projects.
And then next, and the same thing in this last one, you got another with 2025 budget, 9.5 million, where'd that money come from? That's one on the end, right here. 9.5 million, it's over and under 2024 budget for 2025.
What item, what line item over there?
There's a last, there's a last one right here, second last one, 9.5 million. Look, it might be 8.5.
I don't see 8.5 either.
Is that an 8?
What line item, you see on the left-hand side, you got a line item?
Right, yeah, all the way to the right.
All the way to the left.
Yeah, down, down here.
Oh, he's talking about transfers. That's the change year over year.
That's just the change between one year from the earlier year to now, oh, this is in projected 25?
That's the change in the budget, not necessarily the actual expenditures.
Right, it's the change from what we budgeted for '24 to what we're planning to finish '24 with.
So is this 8.5, what you said we're supposed to have left over in the general fund, or just different money?
It's still designated to capital projects, and it will roll to the next year.
Do we have a total, what we spent on capital product that cost the city, not reimbursed money, like how many different projects without, involved with FEMA's money or somewhere else, how much money we actually spent on all these projects we keep talking about?
Our matching funds and stuff like that.
Yeah, there's very little matching funds in relation to the grants and stuff we get, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but most of our projects, most of the grants we get are 100%.
What do you think would be matching, the bond money, how much bond money, I haven't heard, several bond monies, yeah.
What I was talking about.
I don't have it either.
It would be, it would be the bond money that we've got, it's the only city money.
Infrastructure money is city money?
Well, yeah, internet sales tax money, it's city money, yeah, but you can't use it for anything else, it's kind of like the bonds, it has to be used for infrastructure repairs, that's that internet tax money.
Yeah, I mean, just.
I don't have the number off the top of my head, but.
Yeah, we're trying to be out, when I look at these budgets, you got to know where all the numbers are coming from, the numbers are right, we don't have an audit, we're not going to get an audit again, at five years behind time, audits, that's just a joke, audits don't mean nothing, so we're never going to know the true number, we saw it these years, but nothing been audited.
Right.
So, I mean, it's.
Like, so just general fund money, general revenue money, there's very, very little in the capital projects budget.
I'm just trying to bound, how much money are we actually spending, city money, not FEMA's money, not grant money, it's all great to get that, I'm just trying to bound, where are our expenses at, here?
About 400,000 of just general fund money, everything else is.
Something grants and.
Well, all the infrastructure money. Infrastructure money's like 3.5 million.
And Diana, I got the thing you sent me on the phone, you said it was only three of the Bateman, there's three of them, that's all we have?
Yes.
So everything else is done?
Correct.
And we had thought of a new one, so there's just three of them, okay, and then you said it was 570 employees that has insurance and 50-something that didn't?
Correct.
Okay.
That was at that point in time, that could change at any moment.
And I noticed you had the plan commission, I didn't, you can see them employees, there's 16 of them, so.
They don't have insurance, though.
No, no, I said, to me, they're not even employees, you're paying for a meeting, so, but I mean, they're not employees, I'm going to try to be out of numbers, so when you come with 621, we keep coming with 646, just trying to find out how many people we actually have working in City Bucks, that's why I asked this question, and we're getting ready to do our insurance, so we need to know, you said roughly 570, and that's probably close enough, it's usually on the 8, that's 600, so that's what I got from you the other day.
Right, but that number could change at any point in time.
Yeah, because most people retire, and then you hire somebody, you know, I'm not really sure, I know a bunch of people retired here, two at a time coming to meetings, and those hiring people, so I don't know what that does, it fluctuates the salaries that much, because you're hiring people in at 30,000, they're leaving at 50,000, whatever it might be, so I don't know how many people have retired between the Police Department, Fire Department, just the city itself, do you have any idea, Fofo, how many people are actually left?
About six this year, that's coming, huh, six over time?
Six, yeah, we're probably, that's about six to eight.
And we've lost four or five, right?
Oh, yeah, we do.
Yeah. Let me say this about that, you know, as we're looking at where we think we're going to be, and where we're, if we do, you know, bump the thing 2 million like we're talking about, and the revenues will probably be pretty safe, the 74 million is probably pretty safe, but we're trying to estimate, and which we always think to spend less than we had budgeted, you know, on an annual, when the smoke clears, and there may be, again, if we're not spending all the things that we budgeted, then the reflection of that's not going to wind up in, it'll be in fund balance because of the difference of what we spent and what we, the revenues will be impacting, we won't spend that, although we could have spent it, so things that could change between now and four weeks could be the estimated fund balance that we begin the year with, right? And if we're able to do some things with reduced capital even further, that could impact it, bottom line, you know, I guess, from a standpoint, what I would think we need to change, and we're going to massage that, the bottom is the line number 77, this needs to be probably a million dollars, some kind of, 1 million, not a negative 975, that would be a goal, I mean, you understand what I'm trying to say?
Yeah.
How can we do it? I don't know, I don't have the answer right now. But we've addressed, I think, from, again, this is a people's budget, this is a people's budget, not an equipment budget. My next play is, is to look at every bit of contractual services. And if we can do contractual services instead of some of the, uh, you know, things that need to be done in public works and Parks and Rec and so forth, with, with some people that we can calculate and, and make sure that, you know, the, the, the one, eight, five, uh, P E R S puts us on, in a pretty good burden, that's adding like twenty percent to the ballgame. Instead of, you know, fifteen dollars an hour that you pay somebody, you know, add another three dollars to the top of it. So, you know, I, we just, we will massage this continuously, uh, between, you know, every day this week and every day next week till we meet again. So, uh, my goal, and, and, you know, we take, we're taking a chance. If, if our goal in line number seventy seven looks like a million plus. You with me? She says she's with me, so. Right there. Well, I, what's it, three percent or whatever, if we can do whatever we can do and that stuff winds up with a million dollars plus, that's a reasonable chance. Because we always, you know, because we did the same thing last year. And, and, you know, with regard to what we estimated and what we really did. So I'm hopeful that we can reestimate the beginning, the, the, the ending fund balance or the beginning of the year and then the, uh, what we actually do. So from a balanced budget, you know, concern, if I present something that looks like, you know, a million or so, when the smoke clears, I'm reasonably comfortable there. That we will manage whatever expenses we're trying to pull off and hopefully that the revenues will maybe, uh, meet what we think it's gonna be, right? And if we, if we get a little bit more revenue in the last two or three months, that's gonna go right to fund balance. So that means, sort of, if eight point, suppose we get a half a million dollars more revenue, then that eight point five is gonna be nine. Somebody give me an amen.
Amen.
I got a couple of questions.
Sure.
So I'm gonna focus, first of all, on the top line, on your combined financial statement, general property taxes flat. Well, I don't know if it's flat, because we gotta go five different places to find where we're trending and what the actuals are. So it would be very helpful, and I know, I guess, customarily, we've used kind of this format, but you have the revised two thousand twenty four budget in the first column, then you have the change, and that translates into the twenty twenty five proposed budget. It would be very helpful if we had another line that said the projected twenty twenty four, with the, the actual expenditures. It would be helpful if we had something like that. Now, we can go find it, because we can go to some of the other reports to, to translate it into looking at this document right here. So I, I'm just throwing that out there. So, um, it would be helpful if we had that other column in a spreadsheet side by side with these numbers. If we had our best guess on what we were gonna, to, what we're gonna spend in fiscal year twenty twenty four.
Forecast revenue.
Forecasted revenue, it, it would be helpful. I'm just suggesting that, Mayor.
Make sure I understand what you, what you, you know, what clarification on, okay? We, we played the game in, in, you know, last year, uh, September of twenty twenty three. We estimated that the revenue there was gonna be nine point four. At this point in time, looking at where we are right now, plus what's coming up, which would be tax sale, right? We got a tax sale that usually happens in August, right?
Yep.
And that's when it clears up. But I think you're being conservative here, that will be a little bit under our, a little bit under the forecast, but still twenty sixty seven thousand more in, um-
It, it's just the change is representing the change from twenty twenty four budget?
Versus, right?
Versus our twenty twenty five fiscal year budget. That's what the change represents. It doesn't represent, I think sometimes people look at this and they say, like, for instance, at two thousand four hundred ninety four, change is what was actual in twenty twenty four fiscal year, which isn't the case. It's the change from what the static numbers were, what we put out there to begin our twenty twenty four fiscal year. And, so anyway, I just threw that out there, it would be helpful to have that other column. So you could actually compare the twenty twenty four budget with the projected, what we're projected to finish at-
In the twenty four.
In, in, in this year, anyway. So let me move on real quickly. Um, so when we look at this, just look at these pure numbers, it says it's flat.
Let me jump in too, which again, if it, if it, if it outreaches what we're, we're thinking, then I think that's gonna find itself back into the beginning balance.
Right.
Actually in twenty four F Y.
Gotcha, I'm with you. No, you're good. So, so we're flat on general property taxes. Is that accurate? It seems like we'd have some property values that would come on, so there, there may be some other factors that are, is contributing for it to be flat. But it just seems like these numbers, as businesses, we add businesses, I know some of them closed, some of them open. But do we feel strongly that this is actually a good, a good number, a good strong number?
Well, it's too conservative, you think it may be too conservative. We're estimating three point two percent growth in assessed value that we did add?
I had to add extra mills to the debt service fund for the fourteen million and the five million bond, so it took it from the general fund.
Gotcha, alright, well, that explains that. Um, dropping down to federal and state grants, we know our partners up in Jackson, why that number probably went down as we see it here, I'm assuming. Um, I hope maybe there's other, you mentioned last meeting, Mayor, that maybe the governor had some money or, or he contributed some money for, for some projects. Perhaps they can find another bucket, uh, sometimes to give us something, but anyway. Um, the intergovernmental, uh, that number, is that, is that gaming? Where is, when we invoke an interlocal agreement with the county and we get funds for projects? Or, or we just don't recognize those? Because we, we just had a, a road project and they did a hundred percent of it.
They could usually go in the capital projects fund.
Okay, there, so it's, alright, so it's somewhere else. Okay, I'll, I'll analyze that later. Okay, now, for expenditures. In community development, the change from our budget was five hundred and nine thousand dollars. And it seems like it's in capital in community development. So what is that number? Why is that half a million in capital in community development? I just want to understand it. And by the way, you know, Diana, Mayor, I really appreciate the work and effort you put in these, these reports that we get. We understand that they change, they're being revised as we come down to the finish line. But I, I really wanted to let y'all know, we, we appreciate the work you do on this.
Okay, uh, real quick, there's just a, a couple of things there that we're having to do. The old brick house, uh, has a problem. Uh, we're getting a lot of water coming up through the ground. The way that it was constructed back in eighteen fifty four, the bricks were right on the ground. So it acts like a sponge and it pulls water up through there. As a result, the plaster on the walls on the inside, we keep having to go back in and repair it all the time. So what we've done, we found a contractor, uh, through Frank Gensler, that has the ability to go in and put a moisture barrier in the brick themselves, just off the ground, that would keep that moisture from coming up. What we're asking for this year is to try to get the old brick house at least waterproof. If we can just get it waterproof this year, then next year, we would be able to, you know, see that the correction was effective and then go in and actually do some things to the inside. The old brick house would be used a lot more if we could solve this problem.
So we did get an estimate on the waterproofing and it came out to be a half a million dollars?
No, that's part of it.
Okay.
Uh, the other part is, uh, for the visitor center. Uh, the video system in the visitor center has gone completely out. We had a company come in to look at it, they said it's gonna have to be replaced. So that's another part of what's in there. The, the repairs also on the old brick house, let me go back to that just a minute, is to, uh, we've got a grant application that was, we were awarded ten thousand dollars to help replace the roof. I've got an estimate on that, which is fifteen thousand dollars to do that. Uh, that is a fifty percent match. We had applied for sixty thousand, we didn't get the sixty thousand, but we did get the ten, or can get the ten. That'll be on the council agenda, I think, maybe next week.
Was there a reason given why we were denied sixty?
You, you're never given a specific reason. Uh, sometimes it's because they gave precedence to another project somewhere else. But we, we were, uh, we are allowed to apply for the ten thousand. So again, the council agenda on there. We, we just have some buildings, and let me tell you, this is something that's gonna be more and more as, as time goes on. We build these beautiful buildings in town, like the visitor center. And, and you know, we have buildings like the old brick house. And as they get older, they require a great deal of maintenance every year. And so we're, we have to budget some money to maintain them at the level. You know, the visitor center especially is supposed to be the showpiece of Biloxi. So, uh, like right now, there are shutter repairs that need to be done over there. There's some other things that need to be repaired, the front door, we're having problems with it. We're probably gonna have to completely reframe it because the door is so heavy that went in there. But we're just gonna have to start budgeting money to maintain these buildings and not let them deteriorate by neglect.
Let, let me jump in there too, when it comes to that. These are, these are multi-year kinds of expenses, not one year, and it may be best done in a project, a capital project, which we, there is a margin and some opportunity, like what we were trying to do for this building for, for security and, and just to repair it to the outside. That may be an opportunity to get, you know, O and M kinds of stuff from, from our good friends in Jackson. Uh, but you, and you're talking about, uh, I think we just signed a purchase order for seventy five thousand for the A C at, at the, uh, uh, seafood industry museum. We got issues with, uh, the, one of the chillers at Civic Center. We had some issues just the other day with regard to, uh, visitor center. And so then we may wrap that all up instead of, I think your, your estimate for the video was about a hundred thousand dollars. So that may be, you know, something that we could, we could spread over a project and, and over a number of years and maybe get some grants or some offset to that. And but again, that's numbers we're working, instead of being right here in this budget to be spent in this year. Uh, we may massage those numbers and put in, research capital projects for those things you just described.
Yeah, we, we just put the money in there to, to ask for it, to try to address it. And then, of course, the administration and the council is gonna have to decide what's the most important out of the requests that go in. But if we don't-
How to do it.
We don't get it.
Well, how to do it for capital projects based on what, you know, the thirty or so that, that are active.
There was one other thing, Councilman Glavine, too. We're putting, uh, we asked for some money to put security cameras in the pavilion, uh, next to the visitor center because we're constantly having problems with homeless and other people capping out in there or creating problems. So we need some security cameras over there.
So Director, let me move on to another line item. Contractual services is, it looks like for twenty twenty five proposed, it's seven hundred and twenty three thousand. Uh, that's up, I don't know what the actual was, but it, it's up from a four hundred and sixty thousand budgeted, somewhere around that, that area in twenty twenty four. It was three seventeen in that range the year before. What is that seven hundred and twenty six thousand in contractual services?
The-
That's a big number. If I'm looking at this page here.
On contractual services.
It's in contractual services, I don't know if it's on those reports, but I, I just got information in contractual services for community development. It's a pretty big number.
The contractual services? Short, forty seven thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars?
No, I, I have proposed for twenty twenty five, seven hundred and twenty three thousand, fifty dollars.
Is that-
Temporary labor.
Okay, yeah, that's a, that's, yeah, that's not other contractual services. The temps that we use at the visitor center, the majority of that money is used on those temps. Now, let me just tell you this. What we did this year is we took, we had a part-time worker over there and a full-time worker over there. The full-time worker made, uh, forty something thousand, the part-time worker made about twenty, a little over twenty. So what I did is requested the administration approve, and they did, that we take that money, both of those people retired. And instead of having a full-time and a part-time, let's combine those, or split those salaries altogether into two thirty one thousand dollar a year positions. And let's hire a couple of full-time people over there so that we can eliminate some of those temps that are being paid out of there. You know, temps were good to start off with, we started off because we didn't know what to expect. It was after Katrina, after the visitor center had been built. We didn't know how many events we were gonna have there, we didn't know how many people, uh, we would need in order to accommodate those events. So what we did is we started off with temps, and it's worked well up until recently. Uh, the problem is, we were, again, we were paying the temps twelve dollars and fifty cents an hour. And, uh, sometimes we would hire from one of the temp agencies and the people, they wouldn't even show up. So we just recently had to raise that up a little bit, just to get some people interested in it. The good thing about temps is that if you have a problem with them, you just send them back to the agency. You don't have to go through the, uh, discipline process. Um, the bad thing, or one of the challenging things about temps is that you can't really depend on them to open the building, close the building, set the alarm, be there on the weekends, get called out at night, which the visitor center is a seven day a week operation. But the majority of that money comes, uh, is for the temps that we use at the visitor center.
Okay, thank you. Over the coming weeks, perhaps, I mean, that's an area of interest to me, to see exactly what that is, to make sure we're not disputing any of the logic that you're giving us. But that, that's a big area, it looks like. Okay, and then finally, uh, fire department.
Yeah.
Um, and I'm, I guess this is gonna be related to some capital. Uh, one point five, and it may be payroll as well. One point five million dollar increase, almost one point six, um, from last year to this year's budget. Not the actual, but last year's budget, we're proposing an increase, one million five hundred and ninety three thousand, nine hundred and eighty two dollars.
What are you saying?
And that's on the combined income statement. Under fire department. So the fire department, according to this, had a budget of nineteen, one hundred thousand, six eighty one. The new budget is twenty six ninety four, six sixty three. I got the wrong copy? Okay. That happens. Okay.
Bring some over?
You got the good one? It's right here. Million five ninety three, you got the same one. Yep, we got a revised copy.
Kenny, that, that number, it should be five hundred and thirty nine thousand.
Five hundred and thirty nine, that's a big difference, that's a million dollar difference.
Yeah.
And that was my bad. I just printed something. But when you look at that, you know, what was proposed?
Yes.
And again, with the new position, uh, twelve lieutenants and, and that difference now, full persons on wages and, you know, personal salary and benefits was-
Okay.
The difference is five thirty nine zero zero seven.
Alright, that makes more sense, mine said a million five, and I was like, where, where'd that big increase? I, I, I have no other questions at this time.
Does that?
Go ahead. I'm gonna go first of all, I'm sorry, I know you, I've got a few things, and I don't know these numbers, um, may not be right then. On my sheet, I'm showing for-
This is correct, this one's correct.
That one is correct?
Yeah, that was one, as far as differences from this year and last year. She's gonna reprint the, the proper one as far as the combined fund sheet.
For public, or for Parks and Recreation, I'm showing the change is a hundred and four, eight sixty three. Does that look correct?
Uh, no, I'm seeing fifty four, seven, one, eight.
Okay, so mine is wrong.
Yeah, if you're looking at this sheet, this is what's, what I passed out, I'm trying to be nice, passed out the wrong sheet, so, uh, but-
The other sheet then, contractual.
Yeah, she's, she's making contractual services where at?
Just, and, and again, I'm new to this, I may be reading these wrong. Um, but it says for contractual revised for two thousand twenty four.
For which department?
And if I, no, sir, if I read, if I read it right, pub, or Parks and Rec is four hundred and sixty five thousand, four hundred and eighty five.
Right?
No, I'm, that's proposed, I'm sorry, the one next to it, four seventy six, two sixty one.
Yeah, so we're dropping it down by ten thousand.
Thank you. And, and again, is this, I'm assuming that means for that department?
Yeah.
What, that means, I, I guess I should just ask, what does that mean?
It means we-
It means we've reduced that amount of, reduced that contractual service.
Okay.
It dropped.
It dropped that. Okay. It, it dropped to ten thousand. But I guess my question's gonna be for the four seventy-six, two sixty-one, what, what exactly is, what does that money for? I mean, is that money we're paying out to somebody else, not city, not the city employees?
Yeah.
Any idea what that money's going to?
What are we looking?
Contractual services in Parks and Rec.
Oh, I didn't see Sherri back there.
Parks and Recreation, contractual services. We got temps too, don't we?
Also, the, your share of the mowing contract.
And we're contracting that out. We're not actually doing that ourselves.
Referees.
Okay, okay, that's it. Thank you. And mayor, I guess I don't know that anybody's here from Public Works, but if I'm reading this the right way as well, for this year revised, there's five million, seven hundred and twenty dollars. And I know we contract a lot of things out. That just seems like a, a large expense. And I'm just curious, what, what exactly that entails on what we're contracting out for that? Do we know?
Well, four point seven is, is, is solid waste. Four point seven of that million is the solid waste, garbage collection part of that.
Four point seven, okay. So that's, okay.
Utility authority feeding it in this, where's the rest of it?
That's gonna, I'm fine. That's gonna make up the majority. I was just wondering because that seemed, seemed like a lot.
Yeah.
But that's fine. That's, a couple more questions. Diana, you mentioned, and pardon my ignorance on this, a few minutes ago, councilman McGlavin asked you something and you mentioned some extra mills were going to two places.
The debt service fund.
What exactly does that mean?
The debt service fund?
Well, well, the mills, were the mills, were, were just basically just moving money to that, those funds?
Right. We have to allocate mills to the old retirement system, which is called femurs and gemers. There's two of those. And then we move mills also to the debt service fund to cover all debts, including tips. And sometimes we have to use it to make up the trash shortfall.
But that's normal. We move that money around from that. Okay, okay.
So when we allocate the thirty point ten mills, we split it up different ways. And a little later on, we'll do a resolution that actually sets the tax level.
I didn't, that's what I, I wasn't sure of.
Yeah.
Mayor, you mentioned a few minutes ago, two million dollars a couple of times. What was that, two million dollars? I know it was something to do with the employee pay raises, but that was, what did that cover?
Make sure to talk into the mic, mayor.
Oh, excuse me. Two million is probably the bump to everyone across the board.
So that, okay, that's what I was thinking. But so that, for everything you're proposing now, that two million would cover all the pay raises for all the departments? And I believe, last question, you mentioned some things for the fire department. I was trying to take some notes too, but was that, what was that for the, was it new positions or getting rid of some positions?
We ate.
I'm sorry, yeah. Thank you.
Excuse me. Could you, could you hit the phone, hit the microphone? Because I'm barely picking it up.
Fofo's gonna fix them one of these days.
I don't have the budget to do that.
There it is. There we go. All right.
So really what we're, we're just kinda adding a lieutenant position, which is gonna help us with the rating bureau. They like to see so many officers per so many firefighters on fire scenes. So right now, we go firefighter three to a captain. This will allow us to put a lieutenant on each ladder truck, which will help with the span of control and help with our ISO rating.
Okay. And I think you and I did discuss that a little bit. Good deal. And that was, so it was getting rid of some of the positions and then basically just adding.
Right, right.
Okay, good. I appreciate it. Thank you. And that's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Guines?
Okay. Thank you. Because that was, David, that was a lot of what I had to ask about the fire department. And also, does that help bring up some of the other officers or bring up some of your other men to move them up, give them a chance to move them up?
A little bit more ability to, right now, the way it works, hire on firefighter one, go to two. Once you make three, the next step would be a captain, which there's only thirty captains because there's only ten stations and three shifts. So this will give other opportunity for people to, you know, move up in the ranks. Not necessarily, not, won't be, you won't have to be a lieutenant to make captain. You will be able to, to hop that, that position is the way we're writing it in. But yes, it gives more opportunity.
Okay. And that, and that's the goal. Everyone wants to make a little bit more money and have an opportunity.
Yes, sir.
So, appreciate it. Thank you. And the other thing is, I know a lot of people hit on a lot of different things, but I want to thank the mayor for those, bringing that minimum wage up. That was essential. We have a lot of people that buying loaves of bread and I'm glad to see that, you know, some of the minimum workers are being able to move up and, and buy their bread. The other thing is knowing that we have a good working budget where we know that people are going to get something out of this budget. And so I just wanted to say, I appreciate you guys working on it. And I believe that there's gonna be other opportunities later on in the year of possibly moving other people up. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Mr. Chizow?
Thank you. Want to start with the monthly financials. Diana, thanks for sending those out. I looked, looked at them real quick. And, and the reason I'm starting there is just to make a couple of points because I know we don't expect the pie to grow any in terms of revenue. And if we're, if we're looking at two percent and you said right now, mayor, you, you can swing two percent.
I didn't say that.
Well, what is our understanding to be as to where you are right now?
This is, what we presented was what we can swing. And if you did the arithmetic across the board, some at nine point eight percent, some more than that, and some at, you know, in between. You can do some arithmetic and see what you uplift. But, you know, I guess what we ask her to do is look at, at three percent to those people who are not impacted by the upper and the lower hits there. That's what I intended to do in this last cycle. You remember when you did that?
Yeah, yeah, I'm still there, baby. That's where I am. That percent right there. That's what we ought to shoot for. But that's why I asked how much, if it's six hundred thousand, basically for each percent that you increase. If you're looking at two percent and raising, raising the minimum floor, okay? And, and when you say two percent to everybody, that includes raising that minimum floor to fifteen dollars an hour, correct?
Back that out, the two percent that weren't impacted by the upper and the lower bunch. Or you didn't have a, a, a big hit during this current year that puts you in a different, different merit raise. Some people did that.
I guess, I guess what I'm trying to do is, is.
Touch everybody for two percent or touch everybody for three percent that has not touched by what we talked about already. I think that's probably what you want to say.
I just, I can't follow you on all this stuff, honestly. The top and the bottom and the middle and who's touched and who's not touched. What I'm looking, what I'm looking at is we, we doing something, we're, we're taking a big step for law enforcement, right? We're, we're putting them, I think we all said here a year, maybe two years ago, that we ought to be leading the coast on salaries. And that will help with the police department. For everybody else who's not in the police department, what can a firefighter three expect? What can a laborer expect? What can a, a crew leader expect? What can somebody working in Parks and Recreation, the beautification department expect if they're below fifteen dollars? You'd bring them up to fifteen dollars, right? That'd be, I think, a dollar thirty-five, roughly something like that. But that also means that everybody who is above them in terms of pay, now if you raise them, they're, I might get paid now fifteen bucks. Kenny's worked here a little longer and now I'm making more than Kenny. So you gotta do something for Kenny as well.
I appreciate you doing that.
Okay, so.
Right, but only to a certain.
Only to a certain.
Right, only, only to a certain point. It's just the, the, the high churn jobs, I'll call them there, entry jobs or whatever, entry level. But then, if, if I'm making seventeen bucks an hour now, and I've been working in the city for five years, making seventeen bucks an hour, two percent's thirty-four cents. That's, that's not helping me a whole lot. Five percent's not helping me a whole lot, but it helps a little bit more than two percent. And the, the thing is, when, when we, when we talk about, well, if you're not, law enforcement's one thing, everybody else, on average, you're gonna get two percent or whatever. That means some folks are gonna get maybe one percent and other folks, depending on where they fall in all this, might get a four percent raise. But overall, two percent doesn't mean two percent for everybody. That would be accurate, correct? I think.
All right. Let, let me see if I, for about a hundred and ten or fifteen, the high churn, they were touched. And for about a hundred and eighty in the, in the PD, we touched. And, and by twelve, fifteen in, in the fire department were touched. So the difference is where you would apply the two or three percent. Everybody's been untouched by what we have already proposed.
Okay. All right. That, that's. I understand that a little better. So what I'm, what I'm looking for, I can't speak for the other councilmen here, but we do talk among ourselves at times, not frequently. I, I would love five percent. And in order, and my point is, in order to five, find five percent, we've got to squeeze our expenses, whatever we're putting out on expenses, to find those dollars for five percent instead of that two or three percent, to find five percent. So towards that end, just in looking at the monthly financials, and thank you again, Diana, for sending those to us. Right now, if I, if I did my calculations correctly, we budgeted a little under two and a half million dollars that we've not spent because we have vacancies. That'd be about right, Diana. Do you know, you may not know off the top of your head. These are, these are my calculations. But I'm thinking right off the bat, if we didn't hire a person, didn't hire a person to fill a vacancy, there's two point four million. That would give you a four percent raise for everybody. But that's not practical because we want to fill these vacancies for next year. We want to spend this two and a half million. But still, when we have unfilled position, that frees money to do other things. But since salaries are recurring cost annually, this isn't really a true solution. However, there are certain things in going through the financials and, and for expenditures, just for instance, and y'all don't have this paperwork in front of you. But I'll find one or two examples. In Parks and Recreation, this would be oh one four, one one, six six oh two under buildings. We budgeted forty thousand. The revised budget is still forty thousand. We've expended sixty-one hundred dollars to date. It's about fifteen percent of what, of what we've, we've budgeted. So I know we're fixing to wind down the year and there's still some things that, that can happen. We've also overshot the mark in a number of departments on overtime. In, in the, the police director's office under advertise, advertising, we budgeted sixteen thousand. It, it's not changed what we budgeted. We spent about ten percent of that. So these are, are, are areas. I've, I've got, I got a list of them that I can share with you. And I, my point is, some of this, some of the money we're looking for can be right here in how we allocate these funds for next year. I don't know if anybody tracks these from year to year, what the actual is, but I, I, I look at just, for example, where we've overshot the mark, fire department and operations in combat, overtime, we budgeted five hundred twenty-five thousand. We are already at eight hundred fifty-two thousand. We still have two months to go. That'll probably top a million. Public Works Director's Office, under six six oh six, electrical, we budgeted a hundred and sixty-five thousand. We still have a hundred thousand left. Same department. Other, I guess it's other contingencies, six six four nine, we budgeted eight hundred thousand. We've spent two hundred thousand, about a quarter of it. So these are opportunities, I think, just in fine tuning the budget in terms of expenditures and maybe tracking the history on some of these where we can squeeze out more dollars for these pay raises. Under project management, there are a number, and these are small accounts, five hundred here, a thousand there. But all, all of these things add up. I'm looking at the fire insurance rebate and roughly, there, there are a number of things that are budgeted with that money that hadn't been spent yet. And it may be that these purchases are made at the end of the year or what, I don't know. But if we're in a money-saving mode, and it may be that the fire insurance rebates have strings attached and you can only expend them in a certain manner, I, I don't know. Y'all would know that. But tires, we, in different departments, we budget money for tires, we budget money for diesel, and there, there are some savings there. And I know that there are a lot of variables, variables to see, besides what we're seeing here and what next year may bring. I understand that. But again, if the pie's, if the pie's not getting any bigger, then we have to figure out how to, how to slice the pie, as you said, so that we have a people's budget this year. So I, I would, I would encourage my colleagues on this side of the table to just, let's shoot for five percent. Let's, let's do something for our employees. And let's, let's also develop a long-term plan that I would prefer to see a step grade compensation model. I've, I've asked the clerk to put in, in the legislative budget for next year, about eight thousand dollars for the Stennis Institute to do a study. I checked with SMPDD. They don't do compensation studies. They refer me to MML, but I think they would probably also, MML would refer me to Stennis. But just, that's just from the monthly financials. Go ahead, mayor.
Yeah, councilman, I, I would offer, and now you're looking at object code by object code, and I would offer that, hey, we'll sit down and look at each one and evaluate what's proposed to that, what's actually been spent. If we don't do that, you know, and bottom line, the reflection will be, if we budgeted, we got X amount of revenue that we have received, and we budgeted some expenses that we haven't spent, it will wash out in an increase in fund balance if that, you know, if we do nothing just there. So this year, if we don't do anything this year. But if it's, if it's truly a sandbag number, then we can go to that object code for the FY twenty-five and I'll work with you item by item if, that will help us squeeze, you know.
Well, what I would prefer, excuse me for interrupting, what I would prefer is rather than to sit down with you, perhaps at our next budget meeting, you could sit down with us so that everybody knows what's going on, right? Because, you know, I can't always follow you. So if we agree on something that I have to hand it to them and I, I'm gonna forget what you said.
Well, I mean, those, those items that you identified, object code by object code, where we are, you know, in, in the budget, because I can do that bullet by bullet, department by department, you know, which, which gives you those things that you read the seventy percent or instead of eighty-three percent, or we fifty percent, when we should be eighty-three percent. And then if there's some margin in each one, where we look at it, what's proposed, item, object code by this section, department in section, and see if there's some margin to whittle that number down. So those two, three and, and five percent things that were not included in this situation can be doable.
And I would, you may already do this, but I would suggest you sit down with your directors and also do the same thing to help you. They, they know where they need money, where they don't need. They know where they need money, where they don't need money, where they can squeeze some things out. I mean, if... I really hope we can get to 5%. I personally think we can. It may take a couple of skull sessions like this, but I personally think we can get there. The other thing is, a bigger picture that I want to note, is that I would just like for us all to think for a moment about where we would like the city of Biloxi to be. What would we like our parks to look like? What would we like our roads to look like to make this a first-rate city? How could we keep it cleaner? You know, we're trying to figure out how to come up with more revenue to pay our folks more. But, you know, if we want to be here, then the next question is, where are we now? And that's going to vary with everybody's, each individual's perception. Maybe we're here, depending on if my neighborhood's well-kept and so forth. Maybe we're down here. But the challenge that we face annually, particularly at this time of the year, is how to close that gap. I know you want a safe, beautiful, and friendly city. We all want the same thing. It's hard in listening to these discussions to wonder how safe we are. I don't want anybody to panic. How safe we are. We have a great police chief. We have a terrific police force. We need more people, I mean, on the force. That's what we have to do. That's what we're trying to do here. But also, one of those other things in other areas, you know, what do we want our parks to look like? I mean, pickleball came along. We had tennis courts. We repurposed a lot of those. I mean, we... Honestly, we were very agile in that respect. We're not always that agile. It's tough for a big organization to be agile. The next thing I want to cover, in no particular order, we need to have a calendar of what we're going to cover at each of these next budget sessions. I see a couple of folks from the library here. They're standing, ready to answer any questions we have, but rather than them come to every meeting, if we know when we're going to discuss departmentals and put it out there to our partners out there, then they'd know when to show up and be prepared. Also, Mayor, I'd given you a planning, a budget planning form, and I'd also send copies to the directors. And at some point, I would like for us to be able to speak with the directors. And maybe that could be included on the budget calendar, if you would prepare that, you know. But there's some things I'd like to know from the mayor. I know after my... And thank you so much for that water fountain. It's one of a kind, and we appreciate it. That pins all, but what can you do for me in my ward this year? Tell me a project that we're going to get done, or maybe in every ward, tell us something that's going to get done. And then the directors, I'm thinking, if I'm a director, I probably have a good idea of what I'm supposed to do. I'm sure they do have a good idea of what they're supposed to do. Do I have enough personnel to do what I need to do if we want to be a terrific city? Do we need more people in code enforcement? Do we need more certified first aid folks in the fire department? And how to... That's the other thing I meant to mention, was how to incentivize those certifications that we're pushing for, whether it's EMT or paramedics and so forth. And remember, once they get those certifications, they're very attractive to other departments, not other departments, other entities, like Pafford, for example. Nobody saw that coming, but they're out there. But... And also, Mr. Glavine spent some time, I won't replow that ground, but under contractual services, just over the years, over the past three, four, or five years, they've grown significantly. And I don't know, because I'm not working, I'm not on the administrative side. So I think your department heads, if you want to get to 5%, I think if you spoke with your directors, my guess is they could help you squeeze out some money to do that. We also need to have, I think, a long-term plan for... I know we had to replace light poles at Margaret Cherry Park out there with all the lights and everything, and, you know, it's a maintenance issue, and most folks don't know. How would you know? If you were here 30 years, you'd know that every 20 years about you have to replace those poles. But these are the kind of maintenance things that have to be scheduled, that we have to budget for. And if the pie some years does not grow any bigger, but we've got to replace some of our equipment, some of our vehicles, then maybe we ought to look at that tax levy at a future date. I know, I know. That's a big swallow, big swallow. But thankfully, we have paramedics out here that can help you. We just want to get you well enough to sign the check. I think really that's all I want to say. I wanted to say more, but a lot of that was covered with my friends up here on this side of the bench. But as I said, I think if you got with your administrative team and talked about some of these things, I think we can get to 5%. 5%. LSU. I%. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Okay. McGilvery, did you have anything?
Okay.
Okay. Any other last comments?
Yeah, let me say, you notice in the non-departmental, I left them pretty much the same, 1.9 million versus 1.91. So I would suggest if we'll work on those things we've identified, and hopefully we'll come with some goal in the pieces of paper like we have, then we can schedule, you know, as... You know, I'm ready to meet every week if we can, to get this thing wrapped as soon as we can. If you want to schedule another budget before the next meeting, which would be August...
It makes no difference to me, but I know a lot of my colleagues have full-time jobs. Let me go back to one thing I meant to mention and forgot. We've got an insurance meeting tomorrow here for some of our employees. And I'd asked Cy Easterling with Cadence Insurance, yesterday I said, "Do you have a number yet?" And he said, "I hadn't forgotten you. I'll try and get it to you today." And I hadn't heard from him, but I'm hoping we will have that number tomorrow. And as you mentioned, you'd like to see that number lower than it was last year, which would help us to get to where we want to go, I believe. So we're working on that, and hopefully we'll have a number, and it'll be a good number. We might know something tomorrow on that.
Well, like I said, do, you know, if you want to do, meet at 4 o'clock instead of, you know, for a budget before the next meeting?
Yeah, I think our next scheduled meeting, next Tuesday, is going to be 6 o'clock. I think it might be good to meet at 4 o'clock. Carrie, if you... And just again, the general description would be to, just as we did advertise today's meeting, and if that's fine with my colleagues, I can meet anytime, but I know some of them have to juggle schedules. But maybe 4 o'clock next Tuesday would be a good time to see where we are. Give you some time to talk to your directors and work on a calendar and maybe have some...
On the 6th is when we meet, right?
Yeah.
Then if we do not meet on the 13th, but I think we need to meet on the 13th.
No. I think we need... Personally, I think we need to meet every Tuesday, and if we finish early, which has never happened, but if we finished early, that would be terrific.
Yep.
So, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Lawrence?
Diana, you just used this sheet, and we picked up $573,000. Where'd that come from? The sheet you just gave us. The number on the bottom changed to plus.
The sheet...
It's $573,000.
The sheet that was distributed should not have been distributed. That included a 3% raise. That sheet is only for the new compensation schedule.
Okay. And Kenny, did y'all in the FOFO, did you follow up on the 470 short-term, what have we got? Where you got that listed? We can get the money? We're supposed to be collecting from them instead of nobody paying us? I mean, that could be pretty good tax, extra tax money, you know?
I'll just say this real quick. We had a coastal Mississippi meeting. Paul attended the meeting as a guest and had a little dialogue with Judy Young and what that program entails. And yes, she's going to be connecting, I believe, with the mayor's office to try to go over it. It'll drill down right to the zone. You can go to the zoning, R20, R30, whatever. You can go right to the zone, and it'll pinpoint who is operating and who is not paying their taxes and who is paying their taxes.
That was about your budget in the last year? Government...
We could ride their coattails to get that information. I believe that they would provide it.
But, you know, we're not saying we're losing it, but whatever's been collected is reflected in our sales tax.
Yeah. Granius, I think, is the...
Granicus.
Granicus. Yep.
The question was, Airbnb, who received the tax money, the biggest problem, we can't find out whenever to pay it back to the state or us. And they collect it as soon as somebody rents those houses. That's 7% money. The biggest problem, we don't know, we get it or if we ever get it, or they pay it once a year. I really don't know how that works. That was one of the questions we had with Airbnb and or the VRB, or whatever all them things are. And that's the problem, they collect money from these accounts. That time, when they rent, they pay them tax money right then. When do we get our tax money? And that's supposed to be a small business in Biloxi. It's a commercial property, then we should know how much money we should be receiving. Because you said we had roughly 470 of them. That's a lot of little businesses. And until summer, they probably rented pretty good. So I want to make sure we brought that up. And then insurance meeting tomorrow, I'm thinking David and Rodney ought to be there at 4 o'clock. Both of them come to that meeting. No, I mean, it's really, it's just a open meeting. It's not a...
They've been invited.
They need to see what's going on. They need to hear from the... But anybody can come. I'm just saying, since they're learning. And the senior member, David's got to be there to make sure he takes care of the junior member. Rodney. All right, that's it.
All right. Anything else? Meeting's adjourned.
Second.
Motion second. Motion by Mr. Glavine, second by Mr. Guines.
Yeah, we'll take care of that. We can do that part. That summed it up. How's it going with the leg?